Good evening, everyone. I am calling the St. Louis County Council meeting to order Tuesday, March 9, 2021, 6:30 PM. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the Republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to approve the Journal of February 16, 2021. Is there a second?
So moved, second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. The Journal of February 16 is approved. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of February 23, 2021?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The Journal of February 23, 2021 is approved. And finally, I need a motion to approve the meeting of March 2 Journal.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The March 2, 2021 Journal is approved. We have no bid opens this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we will move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, Sixth District.
See file plan specification and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications. Item number one.
Receive and file the same motion through item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply for item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number eight, Second District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number nine, Fourth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 10, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the required plan be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 11, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county councilor, the Department of Planning, the Department of Revenue, the Assessor's Office, and the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number 12, First District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to number 14, and that will be the, through number 14, and that will be the order.
One moment, Madam Chair. Item number 15, Third District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 16, Third District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county councilor.
So ordered.
Item number 17, Third District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 18.
So ordered.
Item number 19, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 20.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion applied to number 21, and that will be the order.
Item number 22, Second District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 23, Sixth District.
See file contracted amount not to exceed $1,301,234.97. Be approved and awarded to Gershen-Gerson Construction Company, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended. An authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 24, Sixth District.
See file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 25, Sixth District.
See file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 26, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 27.
Receive, file, and the matter be referred to the council as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number 28.
Receive, file, and the communication be entered into the Journal of the council. And in regards to Bill Number 50 pursuant to Section 2.110 of the St. Louis County Charter, I move the question. Shall the ordinance pass, the objections of the county executive thereto notwithstanding? Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Discussion?
Just one second. The chair is in doubt.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Webb. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
Yes.
Madam Chair, on the question, shall the ordinance pass, the objections of the county executive thereto notwithstanding? There are four ayes and three nos.
Motion fails.
Moving to add-ons.
Madam Chair, may I make a statement, please?
Councilman Tracus, you are recognized.
Thank you. I was hoping to get this in for discussion, but obviously there's some communication issues technologically, but in any case, I'd like us to look at the issue for what it is. I can sympathize with those who are frustrated with some of the restrictions placed on businesses and individuals by the county executive and the Department of Public Health during the COVID pandemic. I have voted in support of ordinances and resolutions to curtail those excesses on numerous occasions. The rationale behind this effort to defund the amount being paid to St. Louis County's lobbying team is that team's work in opposition to legislation currently moving through the state capital in Jefferson City that sets parameters for the extension of emergency public health and safety orders. I agree that a local governing body, in our case, this council, should have oversight of these orders beyond the emergent phase. Representative Murphy and Senator Koenig's legislation is well-intended, even if I have concerns regarding the timelines and voting thresholds for emergency orders and extensions in their bill. However, to defund the St. Louis County's lobbying efforts in the state capital over this one issue is short-sighted and will harm the county's influence on many other issues, including receiving appropriate shares of COVID vaccine and newly passed federal COVID relief funds, to name but two. Information readily available on Missouri Ethics Commission website shows that both neighboring St. Charles and Jefferson Counties each have three lobbyists representing their county's interest in Jefferson City. Moreover, 27 Missouri municipalities have a total of 74 registered lobbyists, including the St. Louis County cities of Chesterfield, Eureka, Florissant, Hazelwood, Maryland Heights, and Richmond Heights. I do not think it was appropriate to remove funding for St. Louis County's lobbying efforts while these other counties and municipalities fight for their interests daily during the legislative session. And those are the reasons for which I voted no, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Councilman Fitch.
If I could respond. The county, I'm sorry, ma'am. Did you say, go ahead?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. The county executive vetoed Bill 50. That bill removes $150,000 from an account that Mr. Page told this council during budget approval would be used for professional services. Typically, professional services would be budgeted for consulting services, such as problems at the jail or the animal control shelter. According to our budget documents and the budget meetings, this council was never told the funds would be used for lobbyists. We certainly weren't told he would use his funds to fight to keep the council from having oversight of his health orders. As the public is well aware, Mr. Page has said he wants to use these tax dollars for lobbyists to fight against proposed legislation in Jefferson City that would give this council unquestioned oversight of his one-person healthcare mandates. Most council members have always believed we already have this authority based on current language in the charter and ordinances of St. Louis County. Mr. Page has continued to use his politically-appointed county councilor to opine that state law gives health a full, equal person, Sam Page's politically-appointed health director. He's fearful of the legislation pending in Jefferson City as it would widely open the door to this council having oversight of these health orders. He doesn't want more input or oversight. You have to ask yourself why. Mr. Page told residents attending the Jamestown Mall meeting, Jamestown Hall meeting last week that county lobbyists would be working to get funding to develop the property. What he failed to tell the public was that the St. Louis Economic Partnership has already budgeted $200,000 for economic lobbying purposes. It's late now, but I did want to encourage the council to override his veto of Bill 50. It certainly would have sent him a message that this council expects to have oversight of one-person orders, and doing otherwise continues to give him the unquestioned authority over people's lives he believes he has. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Clancy, you're recognized.
Yes, I want to offer a slightly different perspective than what I heard from Councilman Fitch and from Councilman Tracus. I do appreciate Councilman Tracus raising what he did. I do agree. I also, though, see this as about public health. As I see it, and I also want to de-center the politics of this and center the constituents that we serve, because as I see it, politicians in Jefferson City are attempting to circumvent the local control that we currently enjoy here in St. Louis County and have duly exercised in order to issue public health orders that have proven time and time again to have saved the lives of those that we serve. Our lobbyists are helping us fight back, and that is why I supported county executives, county executive Page's veto of this bill. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb.
Yes, ma'am. As I learn more and more about this governing body and how it conducts itself, I want to make sure it's clear that after speaking with members of the lobbying firm and understanding that they're here not only to serve the benefit or at the pleasure of the county executive, they want to work with all of the council. And what I see here is that they're not given a chance, an opportunity, to work on behalf of all of the council with the council needs. It's always a one-sided story. And so what I'm seeing here is that me voting for this was to say that we need oversight, and we need to make sure that our lobbyists are working on the behalf of all the constituents in all of the districts, meaning that they listening here from their county council members. So with that, that is why I support this legislation. I do not believe that the $150,000 is going to stop the lobbying from working on our behalf in all other capacities, but it will send a message that we want to be a part of that process. So that is all that I want to share, and make sure that our voices are being heard and worked, and the lobbyists are working on all of our behalf. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Moving on, Madam Clerk.
Moving on to add-ons, Madam Chair. Item number one, First District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Third District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Report from the county executive.
Thank you, and good evening. It was one year ago this week that I stood alongside Governor Parson to announce that Missouri's first confirmed COVID-19 case was in St. Louis County. Less than two weeks later, I announced the county's first death. No one then could have managed the incredible toll this pandemic would take on our region and on our country. More than 525,000 people in the U.S. have lost their lives to this pandemic. In St. Louis County, 2,039 lives have been taken by a virus few of us were familiar with early last year. Judy Wilson Griffin was the first person in St. Louis County to lose her life to this pandemic. She was a perinatal nurse at St. Mary's Hospital. It was her passion to help mothers bring their babies safely into the world. We cannot let those who have died from this virus over the last year merely become a statistic. The remarks I made on that Friday evening, March 20, and announcing Judy's death bear repeating today. As days turn into weeks, the coronavirus will affect us all, and each of us must realize that we are truly in this together. It's compassion for each other that will get us through this. We are one community. And as one community, we will find hope. As one community, we will overcome this challenge. Today, there is hope. After seeing more than 800 cases per day in November, we are now averaging 135 new cases a day. A year ago, a vaccine was not available. And today, there are three FDA-approved makers of this life-saving shot, and President Biden said the distribution stream is robust enough that now every adult who once won could be vaccinated by the end of May or soon after. In St. Louis County, we are holding large-scale vaccination events. We have set up eight regular vaccine sites, and we have mobile sites to get to many of our most vulnerable residents. Tomorrow, my media briefing, I will have highlights of the efforts to reach our homebound residents. We've been able to slowly relax restrictions based on the combination of a decline in COVID cases and an increase in vaccinations. Yesterday, I announced the most recent changes. Businesses can now remain open until midnight. Gatherings can increase to 20 people inside and 30 outside. Indoor banquet facilities and conference centers can now operate at 25% of capacity. And outdoor events and facilities can now operate at 50% capacity. Sporting venues can now submit a plan to the Department of Public Health to allow more spectators. The cautious reopening of St. Louis County is made possible because so many of our residents have worn masks, limited gatherings, and stayed home as much as possible and respected the space of others. The more we continue with these responsible actions, the safer we can all be. That's all for now. Thank you.
Moving on to public forum. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have this evening?
Madam Chair, we have eight speakers this evening.
Thank you very much. When your name is announced, listen for the clerk to ask you to begin speaking and then state your last name and your zip code for the record. The clerk will inform you when your three minutes are up, and she will give you a little grace period there so that you can complete your thoughts. And with that, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Madam Chair, our first speaker this evening is Diane Unger, followed by Elizabeth Cohen.
Madam Chair, Diane Unger is not on, so we can move on to Elizabeth Cohen.
Okay, we'll reach out to Ms. Unger for her comments. Ms. Cohen?
Yes, I'm ready.
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, Elizabeth Cohen, 63005. A year ago, we were all told that locking down was to flatten the curve. To be clear, that curve that we were flattening was to keep our hospitals from being overwhelmed. I think we've all lost sight of that. So long have we missed it. Now it's all about cases, no matter how mild they are. So I was curious as to how we were doing on some important trends. I went to our local resource, STLcorona.com, to find out, and after some searching through our unpriced trend report, I found some interesting information. I focused on two trends. Hospital admissions and ICU beds occupied by COVID-19 patients. So the weeks of February 2nd through 15th and February 16th through March 1st, both hospital admissions and ICU beds occupied by COVID-19 patients were color-coded as free. And what that means is new admissions decreased by more than 10% in a 14-day period, and fewer than 10% of ICU beds were occupied by COVID-19 patients during a 14-day period. Something you might not know if you aren't in the healthcare industry is that hospitals typically run at 85% to 90% occupancy. ICUs vary with the time of year, maybe 50% to 60%, except during a bad flu season where it may be as high as 90%, which, to be clear, was not a bad flu season this year, was virtually nonexistent this year. So what that means is it is clear we are nowhere near overwhelming our healthcare system, as was the concern a year ago. Large numbers of people have natural immunity from contracting COVID-19, and now many have received the vaccine, with more to come in the near future. A year of public service announcements on hygiene and social distancing have been drilled into the minds of the masses. Mandates are not, many will continue to wear masks, and they should if they still fear the virus and its health risks. People with underlying conditions will weigh the risk of social gatherings moving forward. People will protect their loved ones and make the best decisions for their own families. Zoom is probably here to stay and will help bridge the gap for those who feel they need to isolate. Virtual school options will continue to give families the flexibility they need to keep their kids educated and vulnerable loved ones safe at the same time. But the bottom line is this. Our case numbers are at summer levels. Why are restrictions not at summer levels? Why are we still masking when working out? Why are our kids still wearing masks when competing in sports? Why do we still have curfutes? Why is one man still making decisions that affect the lives of all of the residents of St. Louis County? The emergency is over. It is time to let us take care of our own lives and our own loved ones again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Renee Artman, followed by Celeste Whitzel.
My name is Renee Artman. I am a private citizen, and my zip code is 63026. It has now been one year and two days since the COVID-19 virus. I'm here to say that while the COVID has been a horrible pandemic, it is time that the, at this time, cases are continuing to fall. The residents of St. Louis County are ready to get on living our lives, and the COVID czar, Sam Page, needs to open up the county because we need to resume normal living without the new normal, because there is nothing normal about it. This past year, the county executive during this council meeting has spoken only on one topic, COVID. Do we not have any other business or information that the county executive is concerned about and that he could share with the citizens? Businesses have been destroyed. Our children and our grandchildren are getting a substandard education. Churches are limited attendance. Families are being separated because of social distancing, which is a term I have a problem with because there is nothing social about distancing from our families and friends. In reviewing case numbers in St. Louis County with our extreme shutdowns comparing to other surrounding cities and counties, there is not a great difference. People may still wear the mask as they choose, but we need to get back to the business of living our lives. Open up the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Celeste Whitzel, followed by Don Lewis.
When thinking of the January and February 2021 power grab by Lisa Clancy on behalf of Sam Page, we're reminded of the following quotes. "Their insatiable lust for power is only equaled by their incurable impotence in exercising it." Winston Churchill. "Chief among the forces affecting political folly is lust for power, named by Tacitus as the most flagrant of all the passions. Because it can only be satisfied by power over others, government is its favorite field of exercise. It is a mistake that a lust for power is the mark of a great mind, for even the weakest have been captivated by it. And for minds of the highest order, power has no charms." Charles Caleb Colton. "Leadership is the intelligent use of power." Winston Churchill. "The state acquires power, and because of its insatiable lust for power, it is incapable of giving up any of it. The state never willingly abdicates." Frank Chadrav. Recalling back in January, when Lisa Clancy called Tim Fitch a bully several times merely because Councilman Fitch wanted to address the council with a different viewpoint from Clancy, you see these dictators on their pedestals, guarded by their soldiers, and yet in their hearts, there is unspoken fear among them. They are afraid of words and of thoughts. Words spoken abroad, thoughts stirring at home. All the more powerful, because forbidden, terrify them. A little mouse of thought appears in the room, and even the mightiest potentates are thrown into panic." Winston Churchill. Regarding Clancy seizing power in January and denying the voices of those who disagreed with her and denying newly-elected councilwoman Shalonda Webb her literal rightful seat at the table, the power of the executive to cast a man into prison without formulating any charge known to the law, and particularly to deny him or her the judge of his fears is the highest degree odious and is the foundation of all totalitarian governments, whether Nazi or communist." Winston Churchill. Lisa Clancy styles herself as a progressive, but she proved to be a loud and tyrannical fraud. If it talks like a bully and then shouts like a tyrant, guess what? It must be Lisa Clancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Don Lewis, followed by Josh Share.
My name is Don Lewis, zip code 63122. I'm responding to a comment Sam Page made last Tuesday when questioned by Councilman Fitch. Mr. Page deflected the question and attempted to blame politics as a reason for the question. A direct quote from Mr. Page during his response. "I'm quite confident that folks in the county are happy with county government, happy with the direction we are going. Mr. Page, I'm not one of those folks. The number of unhappy folks is large and growing every day. Here's some reasons why I'm not happy with your government. I hope I can get them all in before my three minutes are up. One, you made a deal with Hazel Erby, a job in your administration so you could become county executive and stinger left. You then fired her, and now facing a lawsuit. Two, you promised Troy Doyle that he would be the next police chief, saying the police board would do what you wanted. You broke that promise, believing you would not have support from some of your donors. Another lawsuit. You continue to hold an outside job in a clear violation of the county charter. Why do you believe you are above the charter? Four, you've refused to stand up and support a return to in-person school. Private school has been open in person since last August with no problems. It can be done. Five, you've unfairly targeted youth sports since the beginning of this pandemic, including currently requiring athletes to wear masks during competitions and up until yesterday only allowing a handful of attendees. Too little, too late. You have failed our students. Six, your participation in holding over Rochelle Walton Gray for an illegal vote to attempt to keep Clancy as council chair and then gave Gray $122,000 job as her reward. Seven, you've allowed your appointed county councilor to put forth a series of incorrect legal opinions and a and a frivolous lawsuit, not for the betterment of the county and its citizens, but to try to keep your power. Eight, you allocated $150,000 of county tax dollars for lobbyist Jeff City to fight against proposals that would rein in your power. Nine, you decided you should be in charge of CARES Act funds. Many questionable allocations have occurred. The most recent one we now know about, $2.5 million paid to out-of-state consultants to improve government. Ten, your press conferences or PR statements that are then repeated at county council meetings. There's very few real questions asked, which is the media's fault, although that's changing a bit. See some recent Post editorials and recent reporting on KMOV and Fox, too. Eleven, you say you follow the science but don't share specifics. Virus numbers have dropped significantly, yet no word on a full reopening of businesses in the county. Moving closing time from 11:00 PM to midnight? Big deal. Reopen the county now. In conclusion, Sam Page, no, I'm not happy with your government. We will continue to pay close attention as you are held to account by this council, state government, and the legal system. To Chairwoman Daze, Councilwoman Webb, Councilman Fitch and Harder, keep doing this good and necessary work to hold the executive branch in check and restore a balance of power to county government. To Councilmen Trachis, Councilwomen Clancy and Dunaway, do what's right for your constituents, not what keeps you in the good graces of county executive Page. Thanks for the opportunity to speak and share that I'm not happy with the county executive. Have a great evening, and that is three minutes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Josh Share, followed by Joan Smith-Lauer.
Hi Diane, can you hear me?
We can, please proceed.
Thank you. Josh Share, six, three, zero, one, one. Just like our earlier caller, Ms. Cohen, I happened to jump on the St. Louis County website to look at a couple of statistics not more than half hour ago. And I came across something that I couldn't believe what I was reading. So between February 16th and March 1st, the average number of new COVID-19 cases diagnosed among St. Louis County residents decreased by 19.4% from 149.3 to 120.3 cases per day. Despite this continued decline, however, the current rate of daily COVID-19 diagnosis is 12 cases per 100,000 residents per day. That remains high. That remains high. I don't know about everyone on this call, but I can certainly do a little bit of math. 12 divided by 100,000, just to give you an idea, is point 012%. What are we doing? Sam Page and Lisa Clancy, you cannot possibly believe the garbage that spews from your mouth. Let me tell you a quick story. Roughly 75 years ago, Hermann Goring, Adolf Hitler's lieutenant, testified at the Nuremberg Court of Appeal trials. When he was asked, "How did you get the German people to accept all of this?", he replied, "It was very easy. It has nothing to do with Nazism. It has something to do with human nature. You can do it in Nazi socialist communist regime, in a monarchy, or even a democracy. The only thing that needs to be done to enslave people is to scare them. If you manage to find a way to scare people, you can make them do whatever they want, whatever you want. Stop scaring people with your emotional BS and take a look at the statistics, the data, and the science. It's time for the county to fully open. No mask mandates, no social distancing, no capacity limits. It's time to reclaim our freedom of choice. And guess what? Lisa Clancy, you can still wear a mask anytime you want, even alone in the car, which I have seen way too much lately. Cannot believe people still do that. Stop scaring people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joan Smith-Lauer, followed by Patty Cantor.
Hi, my name is Joan Smith-Lauer. I live in the zip code six, three, one, two, three. Excuse me. I want to keep unincorporated St. Louis County front and center to the council. We are losing restaurants along Lindbergh and Casson Ferry. We've lost Steak 'n' Shake, we've lost Jack in the Box, we've lost Taco Bell. And the fact that anyone would consider replacing a food service with a drive-through, a beautiful drive-through with an oil change joint is just absurd. So I'm hoping that we can get rid of that idea and replace that restaurant with another restaurant. We're becoming a food restaurant dirt desert. I wonder who, I don't know the council working all that well, but I wonder who does the marketing for these places? Like, who would propose an oil change place instead of a restaurant that was good business? Drive-through restaurants right now are quite popular. And I, for one, unlike some of the other callers here, I'm still very cautious. I will not eat indoors, and yes, sir, I wear my mask. I'm 73 years old. I have not had the opportunity to receive the vaccine. So I won't say that I'm scared, but I'll say that I am cautious. And I appreciate the oversight and the extra caution because I have underlying health conditions and I could be one of the fatalities. So back to my point of issue is, just to keep this in front of the council, our site on LeMay Ferry or Casson Ferry in 21 and also over on Graboy, across from Grasso Plaza, it is zoned for drive-through restaurant, and let's please keep it be a drive-through restaurant. It's coming up on summertime. We'll want to be able, this Taco Bell up here has a wonderful outside patio with a shade, piece of shading wood, whatever you call it, I can't, a gazebo over the top of it. Anyway, I want to keep it in front of the council. Don't let this area become a food. I guess that's all. Thank you very much. Have a great evening, folks.
Thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Patty Cantor.
Sam Page, someday, I hope we find you under oath while you attempt to explain why St. Louis County has been locked down, under curfews, with stores and restaurants horribly limited to 25, and now finally 50% of legal occupancy under your tyrannic thumb. St. Charles County has never had a mask mandate. St. Charles County stores and restaurants are open at full occupancy with no curfew. In addition, the St. Charles County Council meets in person with citizens in attendance with no mask mandate. Their constituents are able to address their elected officials in person during the public forum. The results? St. Charles County and Sam Page's St. Louis County COVID-19 infection rate is virtually the same. Their death rate, virtually the same. In other words, Sam, your tyrannical dictatorship of mandates did nothing. Nothing to improve our health. Sam, I wish you would consider contacting County Executive Steve Elman to learn how his lack of tyranny, no lockdown extremes, and no mask mandate worked so well. He achieved the exact same results as you, Sam Page, but his county has thrived, as our county has seen many businesses shutter and go under. I wonder, Sam, what does he know that you don't seem to know? And I'm not making this up, Sam, or Lisa Clancy. You can go to Missouri COVID-19 website and see for yourself. Our results are virtually the same. I've talked to Steve before, and he's a very nice man. I'm sure he'd help you, Sam. I know the citizens of St. Louis County would appreciate being treated like adults and people that can make their own choices concerning living their lives. In the meantime, we continue to drive to St. Charles County for get-togethers. We meet for breakfast at their shack as we drive by the shack by us. We meet for lunch and dinner at their Walnut Grill and other restaurants that we still have here in the county. In fact, some of us, we don't intend to stop doing this either. Steve Elman welcomed us with open arms, and the least we can do is keep giving him our tax monies. Sam Page, you are a tyrant with no respect for the people of St. Louis County. I look forward to the day when you, Lisa Clancy, and Sherri Dunaway are out of our business and out of our government. Lisa Clancy, you just said tonight, no.
Ma'am, that's three minutes. You have 10 seconds to wrap up, please.
Lisa Clancy, we don't have any more, we didn't save any more lives in St. Charles County, and that's a fact.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that is all the speakers for this evening.
Thank you to all of you who took the time to voice your opinions with us. We really appreciate that, and we will move on to introduction of bills.
Proceeding with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill number 69, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Dunaway, an ordinance amending Chapter 611, Title VII, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, the Animal Control Code by repealing and reenacting Section 611.040 pertaining to definitions and Section 611.180 pertaining to cruelty to animals. Bill number 70, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $20,000 from the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development, Office of Workforce Development, appropriating the same for support of on-the-job training program services and authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary contracts or other documents. Bill number 71, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept grant funds in an amount of up to $4,337,555 in community development block grant, CDBG, funds, and $3,187,544 in emergency solutions grant, ESG, funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And authorize, as authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, appropriating said grant funds for support of various Department of Human Services programs, which provide assistance to St. Louis County residents experiencing economic hardship due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents. Bill number 72, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance approving acceptance of donation of $80,000 from the St. Louis Police Foundation, appropriating same for support of an application to improve police officer mental health and wellness, and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill number 73, introduced by Councilmember Webb, an ordinance approving acceptance of donation of $318,000 from the St. Louis Police Foundation, appropriating same for support of a contract with ShotSpotter Incorporated for the expansion of the ShotSpotter gunshot detection program in the Glasgow Village area of St. Louis County, and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill number 74, introduced by Councilmember Webb, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with ShotSpotter Incorporated for implementation of the ShotSpotter program in the Glasgow Village area and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance amending Title 11, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Public Works and Building Regulations by enacting and adding a new chapter to be known as Chapter 1119, Electric Vehicle Charter Code. Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Daze and Webb, an ordinance amending Chapter 107, Title 1, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, purchasing by repealing and reenacting Sections 107.020, amending Chapter 202, Title 2, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, personnel classified service by repealing and reenacting Section 202.270, amending Chapter 714, Title VII, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Commission on Human Relations by repealing and reenacting Section 714.030, amending Chapter 717, Title VII, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Fair Housing Code by repealing and reenacting Section 717.010, amending Chapter 718, Title VII, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, the Public Accommodations Code by repealing and reenacting Section 718.010, amending Chapter 722, Title VII, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Human Relations Related Petty Offenses Code by repealing and reenacting Section 722.030, amending Chapter 111, Title 11, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Sewer Lateral Repair Program by repealing and reenacting Section 1111.020 and amending Chapter 1112, Title 12, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Water Service Line Repair Program by repealing and reenacting Section 1112.020, all pertaining to nondiscrimination provisions pertaining to race. Bill number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in St. Louis County on the date of the next countywide election for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of St. Louis County a proposition to amend Section 5.030.1 of the St. Louis County Charter to provide for gender-neutral language in Section 11.110 of the St. Louis County Charter pertaining to nondiscrimination and employment and compensation of county employees. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you very much. Moving on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is hailed.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is hailed.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill number 266 is hailed.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill number 267 is hailed.
Bill number 67, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 67.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, give Diane a name.
On the way.
All right, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries, Bill number 67 is perfected.
Bill number 68, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect Bill number 68.
Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, suppose, no. Motion carries, Bill number 68 is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 320.
Bill number 320 is hailed.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
I move to hold Bill number 14.
Bill number 14 is hailed.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76 is hailed.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
We had a brief hearing about this today, and it confirmed that all stakeholders are on the same page with this substitute bill. So with that, I move for final passage of Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 202.
Second, Trachis.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Substitute Bill number one for Bill number two-oh-Two, there are seven ayes.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number two-zero-two is finally passed.
Bill number two-twenty, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number two-twenty, please.
Bill number two-twenty is hailed.
Bill number forty-four, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill number forty-four. Second, Webb. Second, Webb.
Second, Webb. Uh, just in a discussion, I do have a statement that I want to make about Bill number forty-four and uh, its passage. I have, uh, received, uh, extensive information uh, from, um, the Director of Parks, Tom Ott, and, uh, was pleased with that information. I, uh, do however, am still missing the information regarding the escrow money and where the remainder of that escrow money is. I will not hold up the bill for that, but I will be looking at that and, and doing more research on that because, uh, for a million some dollars to just kind of disappear, uh, in my mind, is not very responsible. So I will be looking, uh, into that to see where that money actually, uh, um, has gone. So with that, um, there was a motion and a second, I do believe, and so roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number forty-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number forty-four is finally passed.
Bill number forty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please, uh, read the substitute. Is that your wish, Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
I'd like to defer to, uh, Deputy Clerk McKenna to read the substitute bill, please.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number forty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, An ordinance appropriating and setting apart the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents from the unappropriated balance of the General Fund for Support of Audit Services provided by the Missouri State Auditor.
Yes, so this substitute bill corrects for an error in the invoice that was sent to us by the State Auditor's Office. Uh, I move for adoption of Substitute Bill number one for Bill number, uh, forty-nine.
Forty-nine. Um, the substitute bill has been introduced. All in favor of adoption of substitute, uh, substitute number one, please say aye.
Madam Chair, did we have a second?
We did not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought I heard a second. Is there a second on that?
Second, Webb.
All right, now we have a second. So all in favor of adoption of the substitute, please say aye.
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 No, suppose no?
Aye.
The substitute is adopted.
Uh, I also- Yes, I would also like to move for perfection of this. I do understand that, I know at least one council member does have some questions. Um, we are on spring break next week, though, so I would like to keep this moving um, and, and use the time in the interim between now and when we resume after spring break to get some of those other questions answered, and if there's another substitute bill necessary to prepare that. So with that, I would like to move for, um, perfection of Substitute Bill number one for Bill number forty-nine.
Second, Dunaway.
Is there a second?
Dunaway.
Now-
Madam Chair, I think-
I'm sorry. This is on the final passage. Now, I'm, I'm thinking that you would probably have to hold this.
I'm sorry. That was my error. Yes, I will hold this. Um, but I also, the request is the same. If anyone has any, any concerns about this bill, um, please let me know so we can keep this moving along because we do have a bill due to the State Auditor's Office. So thank you.
All right, so your motion is to hold, um-
That is correct.
Number forty-nine, that, uh, um, that is hailed.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to Bill number fifty-one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Do you hold him?
Um, we had a hearing about this last week. I know that there's still a couple of questions that some folks have about this, but I would like to vote this up or down, um, when we resume from spring break. So with that, I will, um, hold Bill number fifty-one this evening.
Bill number fifty-one is hailed.
Bill number fifty-two, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
Madam Chair.
You are recognized, Councilwoman Webb.
Madam Chair, thank you. I would like to drop this Bill fifty-two from the order of business.
Bill number fifty-two is dropped from the order of business.
Thank you. Bill number sixty-two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number sixty-two.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number sixty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-two is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-three, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number sixty-three.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number sixty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-three is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-four, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill sixty-four.
Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
Um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number sixty-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-four is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-five, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I move for final passage of Bill number sixty-five.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number sixty-five, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-five is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-six, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill number sixty-six.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number sixty-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-six is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have three resolutions this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please read- Yes, please read Resolution number one.
Yes, sir. Resolution. Whereas Sergeant Will Knittle and Lieutenant Mike Worgis have served in the Eureka Police Department, Eureka, for twenty years and twenty-two years, respectively, and both officers have undergone forty hours of crisis intervention training. And whereas Sergeant Knittle served as a detective on the Major Case Squad and is currently a supervisor in Eureka's Uniform Patrol Division, where he serves as a role model to less experienced officers, passing on his knowledge and experience to better prepare them to handle serious incidents such as death investigations. And whereas Lieutenant Worgis spent many years as Eureka's K-9 Officer and received numerous awards for duty- for duty performance in that role, and in October of twenty-twenty was promoted to his current position as Commander of the Uniform Patrol Division. And whereas, on the afternoon of February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, both officers responded to a domestic violence call. Upon arriving at the house, they heard a gunshot and discovered an armed individual who had barricaded himself inside a part of the home along with a female hostage, and further discovered that two children under the age of five were inside the home. And whereas, aware of dire outcomes and other situations where children were present during a domestic violence incident, Sergeant Knittle and Lieutenant Worgis took heroic action to quickly and quietly remove the children from the house, and their swift actions saved the children from the immediate threat of deadly harm. And whereas, police officers were ultimately able to de-escalate the situation without any bodily injury or loss of life. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council, on behalf of the residents of St. Louis County, extends their deepest gratitude to Sergeant Knittle and Lieutenant Worgis for their courageous efforts to save the lives of all persons involved in this incident, and recognizes them for the great credit they bring to the Eureka Police Department, St. Louis County, and all of our dedicated and professional law enforcement officers. Section two, the Administrative Director shall send certified copies of this resolution to Sergeant Knittle, Lieutenant Worgis, and the Chief of the Eureka Police Department as permanent tokens of the Council's esteem and admiration.
Thank you. I propose, uh, adoption of Resolution number one.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Thank you. Uh, motion carries. Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, sir. Resolution. Whereas, the case of Keith Wildhaven versus St. Louis County, Missouri, resulted in a settlement agreement pursuant to which St. Louis County paid ten-point-two-five million and five million in interest to settle claims related to allegations of discriminatory conduct by the Department of Police, when the case could have been settled earlier at a significantly lower cost to taxpayers. And whereas, the County Council believes that certain legal opinions issued by the County Counselor regarding public health orders issued by the Department of Public Health serve the County Executive's interests, but were not in the best interest of the people of St. Louis County. And whereas, the County Counselor has refused to enforce Section Three Point Zero-One-Zero of the Charter, wherein it is alleged that- excuse me, wherein, wherein it is alleged the County Executive continues to perform secondary work unrelated to his elected duties when the Charter requires him to devote his full time to the duties of the office. And whereas, the County Council does not agree with the County Counselor's interpretation of Charter Section Five Point Zero-Two-Zero insofar as it provides for three separate divisions in the office of the County Counselor, of which their work continues to be commingled in violation of the Charter. And whereas, the County Council does not agree with the County Counselor's interpretation of various provisions of state law and the Charter and ordinances of St. Louis County related to election of the Council Chair and Vice Chair for twenty-twenty-one, and to Bill number three-fourteen, twenty-twenty. And whereas, the County Council does not agree with the County Counselor's decision to file a petition for quo warranto in St. Louis County Circuit Court on January sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, at a significant cost to county taxpayers for the purpose of advocating for two members of this council against other members lawfully elected as Chair and Vice Chair for twenty-twenty-one. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council expresses its lack of confidence in the County Counselor and further expresses its expectation that the County Executive will address the Council's dissatisfaction as expressed herein. Section two, the Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to the Honorable Sam Page, St. Louis County Executive.
I move for the adoption of Resolution number two.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Madam Chair, discussion, please.
Discussion, please. Councilwoman Dunaway, you are recognized.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. You know, um, this is a challenging resolution, um, because there's a lot in here that feels very black and white to me. Um, in more broadly, just the legal industry, billions of dollars and billions of spa- of hours are spent each year making arguments in favor of one side or the other because nothing is as simple as some whereas's in this document would have us believe. These are tough issues. The one most recently was so tough that Councilmembers Fitch, Days, and Harder couldn't even get the representation that they wanted within the parameters they're demanding of St. Louis County. Their lawyers weren't from an MBE or a WBE-certified firm. They charged St. Louis County a hundred dollars more per hour than the county charges the firms we use for outsourcing some of our work, in part to defend more lawsuits than we have the bandwidth and expertise to deal with internally. And with our dismal pay and long hours, we can't even keep the lawyers we get. And while that's a topic for another day, it goes back to so many of the other issues that this resolution brings up that have so much more to do with who the County Counselor is. Our County Counselor got one wrong, says one judge. A different day, a different judge, perhaps a different outcome. For mu- for me personally, I got a legal opinion. It was sound, and I relied on this advice in seeking out my own counsel, which for the record, didn't charge St. Louis County any money, and we got it wrong. It doesn't make any of us lesser people, professionals, or committed to our work for St. Louis County. This resolution is just mean. And if Chairwoman Days meant what she said about extending an olive branch and moving on from this distressing situation, I hope she and others will join, join me in voting no on this hit piece. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman Webb, I didn't see you there.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I respect the comments of my colleague, Councilwoman Dunaway. And I understand the personal attachment. But as professionals, there are certain things that we expect. So let me clearly set my expectations from the County Counselor's office. We need to make sure that our attorneys that we rely on are impartial. We should be able to consult with them and receive legal opinion based solely on the law and not that of ba- base biases, excuse me, and opinionated. We should have the confidence that our attorneys are here to serve not only the County Executive, but also ourselves. Unfortunately, Councilwoman Dunaway, I didn't receive a welcome mat when I joined this County Council. I received a lawsuit. A lawsuit that was not based on facts like the Missouri statutes, but a lawsuit that was based in biasness and some incorrections and inconsistencies in the County Charter. What I'm stating here is that we all- What I'm stating here is that we all need to be held accountable. We have a county councilor's office of twenty-three lawyers that should be able to support all of us. Not that we should be suing each other and wasting taxpayers' monies. Yes, I had a minority lawyer. Yes. He's, his prices were within the range. So I, I stuck to the rules and I defended myself. But I would have preferred to work with the county councilor's office in defending, in not having to defend at all, but getting an unbiased opinion. So here I'm serving to say to all that we need to be accountable in every way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Councilwoman Dunaway, this wasn't meant to be mean. As a matter of fact, I had to think about it long and hard before I wrote it and rewrote it and rewrote it. I have friends in the county councilor's office. Lot of years, decades worth of friends in the county councilor's office. However, to leave it unsaid and not express this council's dissatisfaction. And Ms. Orrick, I'm glad you're here tonight. It's the first time we've seen you since you sued us. I'm glad you're here. You are a great federal prosecutor. And Sam Page is ruining your reputation. I'm sorry, but that's what he's doing to you. And we needed to speak out and say what we think is right or wrong. And it's in, and yes, we'd love to move on, Kelly. We really would. However, uh, we didn't want to move on when the lawsuit was filed. So we have to hold people accountable like Councilwoman Webb said, and I think this resolution makes our, our voices heard. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sing non, please call.
Yes, please, Madam Chair.
One second. Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, um, I really appreciate the words that Councilwoman Dunaway offered. Um, I want to, to voice my support for our county councilor's office, who gave us legal advice in a very unique situation um, that because of legislation I've called for and am working on moving, will never happen again. Um, I think that there are some members of this council who have made this decision political. The laundry list of grievances um, that Mr. Fitch has here in this resolution includes clearly political fights that he has spearheaded over the last year, like his objection to public health orders that have proven time and time again to have saved the lives of the people that we serve. Um, in this moment that Mr. Fitch is using in the middle of a pandemic, no less, to bully the county counselor, the people's lawyer of St. Louis County, isn't all that surprising? As that does seem to be his pattern when he disagrees with an accomplished woman, particularly one that is younger than him. That makes it no less disappointing. Um, when Mr. Fitch is county executive, that, if that ever happens, he can choose his own lawyer. Um, the lawyer is not here for us as individuals. Our county counselor, our legal counsel for St. Louis County is here um, to serve the people of St. Louis County and not to serve as our own personal lawyers. Um, and again, they have given us legal advice that in this particular matter was developed in consultation with some of the best legal minds and most accomplished law firms here in our region. Um, some have been unhappy with that advice, but that does not make her biased, nor does it make the actions political. I am opposed to this resolution. Thank.
Any further discussion? Please call the rolls.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
No.
Excuse me, Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
No.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are four ayes and three noes.
Motion carries. Resolution number two is adopted.
Our final resolution this evening, Madam Chair, resolution number three introduced by councilmembers Days and Harder.
Thank you very much. I will not ask you to read this, Kevin, so you can relax. Um, this is a resolution regarding the rules. We, it has been out of uh, for about four or five weeks now. Everyone has had an opportunity. I hope you have had an opportunity to look at this. This is based on a lot of suggestions that some of our constituents have made uh, in terms of uh, public comments and in terms of order of the agenda. Uh, so with that, I will move the adoption of resolution number three.
Second. Harder.
Madam Clerk, please call the rolls.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number three, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries. Resolution number three is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business under item number one.
Please hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Please hold on the order of business and that will be the order. New business?
Moving on to new business, Madam Chair, we have five prepared orders this evening. Order number one, in the matter of communications from Jennifer Keating, Acting Director of Procurement, and Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Order number one is adopted.
Order number two, in the matter of the Director of Revenue's request to transfer all interest in certain real estate bought, bought by him as trustee at the Collector's two thousand and eight tax sale.
I move for adoption of order number two.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Order number two is adopted.
Order number three, in the matter of the Director of Revenue's request to transfer all interest in certain real estate bought by him as trustee at the Collector's two thousand and ten tax sale.
I move for adoption of order number three.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number three is adopted.
Order number four, in the matter of the Director of Revenue's request to transfer all interest in certain real estate bought by him as trustee at the Collector's two thousand tax sale.
I move for or move for the adoption of order number four.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number four is adopted.
In our final prepared order this evening, Madam Chair, order number five, in the matter of the date for the next regular meeting of the county council.
I move for adoption of order number five.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Order numbers five is adopted.
That is all the prepared orders this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other matters to come before the council at this time? I want to remind everyone that this is daylight saving time on, on Sunday, so uh, be aware of that and that the various offices will determine how they are handling the break. Uh, we will not have a meeting on Tuesday. So please be aware of that. That is for the constituents that are uh, listening this evening. Any other business to come before the council?
Motion. Motion to adjourn.
Please. Second.
Second, Fitch.
Second, Fitch. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Please stay safe and see you, and have a s- safe spring break.